Thank you for your mercy and your grace, Lord. We just thank you for just loving us, God. Father, we do want to pray for our veterans. We want to pray for our military, Lord. We just pray for our law enforcement officers, Lord. We just praying that you be with us, be with them, Father. Keep them from any hurt, harm, and danger. Father, we just pray your angels being camped around them as they do their, as they do those tough jobs, Lord. We just ask that you be with them. Be with the leaders of the United States. We pray for the president, Lord. We pray for the congressman. We pray for the senate. We pray for each and everyone that has been elected, Lord. Be with us all. Give us wisdom, understanding. Father, we don't know it all. We, we need your guidance as we make decisions concerning the people. Father, we just praying that's that you be with Gulf County. Be with our first responders, Lord. Bless the people of Gulf County. Lord, bless the people in this room. Bless our families. We give you praise. We give you glory. And we give you honor. It's in Christ's name we pray. Amen.
You want me in the pledge? On the pledge, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning to everyone. Welcome to the July 28th VOCC meeting. Have a few items on the agenda this morning. Also, if, if you don't mind, could you please silence your cell phones so we won't have any cell phones going off during, during the meeting? Mr. Commissioner Rogers is joining us. He's on, on the phone. Also, the attorney is also joining us via the phone call in. At this time, we will move right ahead to the consent agenda. This is where one vote covers a multiple items. If there are any questions or concerns, if there's anyone in the audience with any questions or concerns with consent agenda, you can be recognized at this time. Any questions or concerns? Is there anyone on staff with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? Any board members with any questions or concerns with the consent agenda? After being done, I entertain a motion that we accept the consent agenda as is.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on the agenda? Anyone in the audience? All right. Any emails, Ms. Care? All right. Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh. All right, moving right along. Going to county staff business. Mr. Hammond.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. If we could, Danny Collins from Duke Energy is here and he's got an update on a, on a good project that's going to be coming up on Cape San Blas. If we could call him up.
All right, Mr. Collins, come on up. State your name and who you represent for the record, please, sir.
Good morning. Danny Collins with Duke Energy. Michael asked me to, to come by and give you all an update on, on what we've got coming. We're in the process of constructing a battery storage project at the Cape. It'll be one of four batteries that, that we're gonna put in service in Florida, our first four. So, pretty, pretty big deal that y'all be one of the first ones. So generally, I'll give you kind of a rundown of what it is. This is not, we, we are not coming to you yet for site plan approval or anything like that. This is more informational. So, details on the site plan will come later. We'll be back before you about that at another time. But this is just more background. So, the, the size of it's about a five and a half megawatt battery. That, that's a pretty good size. These are lithium ions. So, it's not actually one big battery. It's hundreds of small batteries like what's in your phone, stored in a precast concrete container or series of containers. Probably be a couple of them. They generally, you know, you think of batteries, they're, they're gonna store the, the energy and then, you know, we'll use it when it's needed. In this case, this is not, you know, something that's tied to salt or anything like that. The issue we're looking at here is on the Cape, for a couple of months of the year, it's, you know, it's pretty busy out there. We have some times when there's some voltage, particularly on holiday weekends when everybody's out there. Instead of spending money to upgrade a substation, we'll use the battery to kind of solve that, that issue when it, when it should occur. We're looking to put it on, we bought some property on 7921 Cape San Blas Road near Spinnaker Way. It's a two acre tract, so we'll, we'll put it in there. Our site plan will include some vegetative buffering to make sure that it's in a way that won't cause any negative visual impacts to folks that live around there and drive past it. It's a pretty quick project from a construction standpoint. Once we go into construction, we're hoping to, to be able to go into construction later this year and wrap it up first thing next year. I'd say within the first or second quarter next year, we would be done and it would be operational. I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all might have about it that's not too specific to the, to the site plan.
Okay. All right. Any question for Mr. Collins?
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Dan.
Danny, thank you for coming this morning. This battery system, it is to help, is to, to boost your voltage during your high, high peak time.
Yes, sir. When, when we have, you know, full use out there of all, you know, all the folks are in town using the air conditioners and everything else, it's gonna cause some voltage issues. So, we're, we're gonna put this battery in to help manage that.
Now, will that cover Indian Pass, all of the Cape, or just what primary area?
Anything from Indian Pass up out. So, it'll, it'll help quite a few folks that are out there.
Okay. Will they come on automatically?
Yeah, and that, that's another piece to it. So, it, it, you know, it's gonna be tied to a, essentially a telecom system. We'll monitor remotely all of our battery and solar or monitor 24/7. So, when the need arises, the substation will let us know the battery, that we can essentially hit a button and put the battery into service as necessary instantaneously.
All right. One other question, Mr. Chairman. I finished. Now, let's say if you have a power outage, will they supply the voltage you need or not? Do you have to have your main power supply?
Correct. And a five megawatt battery is really not enough to run everybody for a while. I mean, it, it will allow some additional energy on the grid, but it's not gonna be enough to, to really power. It's not gonna be like a generator for everybody out there. If it's, if everybody's out there, it's full, it's a big weekend, and, you know, God forbid we have a terrible storm come through and knock a bunch of stuff down. The battery will do a little bit, but it's, we're talking minutes or maybe hours.
And Gulf County is one of four sites.
One of the first four in the state. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Collins.
Danny, I, I know we've had voltage problems dealing with air conditioning and all for years out on the Cape and, and creates a lot of problem when the demand gets so high, the, the voltage drop is tremendous and people don't realize. But is that gonna boost us up?
Yes, sir.
So, so we can eliminate a lot of those problems, forest capacitors and all it, you know, creates during the peak time?
That, that's the, the main purpose of this.
Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Any more questions? Mr. Hammond?
If you could give the board just a ballpark estimate of the investment from Duke on this project.
Yes, sir. So, we're looking, and again, we, we haven't had it fully designed and we'll know more after construction, but this will be, you know, just to give you a range somewhere between 10 and 20 million dollars. So, pretty, pretty nice project.
Yes, for Gulf County? Yes, for this one?
Just for this one. Yes, sir.
I didn't want the small batteries to throw you off, this is. This is a, this is a really big investment that Duke's putting in our, our community. So, and a, and a very big positive, just like you said, to, to regulate the, the huge power spikes, especially during the summertime or peak demands. We're kind of full in the winter, too. And if they turn those heat strips on, they can pull more than the air conditioner. So, it, it will be a year-round benefit, but a big investment.
And, and a cost saver for us as opposed to upgrading Indian Pass substation yet. So, this is, you know, it may be an expensive project, but there's still cost savings for our customers.
Mr. Collins, thank you. We really, we really appreciate it.
And, and thank you guys also for your assistance with the dead tree issue. We, we've wrapped up with that.
Appreciate it.
And we removed three times as many trees as we had told you originally. And that's certainly due to, to y'all's help with that, with the waiving of the tip and fee. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm Mr. Hammond. You still got the floor?
Yes, sir. Page one in your packet. Request for Opportunity Florida for a letter of support and for you to commit to their funding for this next year.
Any questions, concerns, commissioners? After being none, then I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? Emails? Any opposition? All right. Motion passes five and oh.
Page two. My recommendation on the review from the CBGR, CBGDR award, bid number 192032. The rankings came out as Gurus, number one, Gurus and Associates recommend we award to Gurus and Associates.
Any questions, concerns, commissioners? All right. I entertain a motion then. We accept.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. All right. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any emails, Ms. Care? Any opposition? All right. Motion passes five and oh.
Warren has the next one.
All right, Mr. Yeager.
Hey, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, we had went out for an RFQ for the restaurant bar there at the golf course. We've been there a year. So, if you will give us permission, we had two folks that put in for that. We've actually looked over their proposal and had discussions with both. Still have to have some more discussions with further staff, but if we could get y'all's approval to award that based on staff recommendations and have the chairman or Michael sign off on that contract or any necessary documents.
Any questions, concerns, commissioners?
Warren, are we going for one year again? Or are you gonna extend? I know it's a little tough for restaurants just to buy in at one year. I don't know if you was gonna try to do a little longer?
We are. We're gonna try to do a little bit longer with, with the capabilities to extend even that for a, a year at the time if everything's going well and that kind of thing. It's a pretty good investment for some of these restaurants to come out there and invest in some of the equipment and all that kind of thing. So, we are gonna try to extend that to a, a three-year contract where we don't have to come back every year and ask you to do that.
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion?
One discussion, please. Mr. Yeager, or the local people?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Any more board discussion? Anyone in the audience? The audience? Any emails, Ms. Care? All right. Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Please, for Mr. Chairman, request from Secretary Burke and Sean Pierce for a letter to the Department of Social Resources for a grant for the Cape San Blas Lighthouse Company. I'd like the approval for the request.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Ms. Care? All right. Motion passes five and oh.
Same thing on the five, the question city, uh, this Pierce for the Cape San Blas.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? All right. Any emails, Ms. Care? All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Apologize, I guess it would help if I turned my mic on. We had a clip that was sent to us. I'd like to play now. It's about the coronavirus and, and going back to school. It was interesting. We had a lot of calls yesterday about the, the cities, a little confusion with the city deal. They didn't do an ordinance. They did a proclamation, emergency declaration. It is not a, a, an enforceable crime not to wear a mask. It's, but they're encouraging it and some businesses require it to go in, but we had a lot of, of calls about that. And, and again, it just brings up the whole nationwide phobia of.
So, it'll, it'll help quite a few folks that are out there.
Okay. Will they come on automatically?
Yeah, and that, that's another piece to it. So, it, it, you know, it's gonna be tied to a, essentially a telecom system. We'll monitor remotely all of our battery and, and solar or monitor 24/7. So, when the need arises, the substation will let us know the battery, that we can essentially hit a button and put the battery into service as necessary instantaneously.
All right. One other question, Ms. Chairman. I finished. Now, let's say if you have a power outage, will they supply the voltage you need or not? Do you have to have your main power supply?
Correct. And, and a five megawatt battery is really not enough to run everybody for a while. I mean, it, it will allow some additional energy on the grid, but it's not gonna be enough to, to really power. It's not gonna be like a generator for everybody out there. If it's, if everybody's out there, it's full, it's a big weekend, and, you know, God forbid we have a terrible storm come through and knock a bunch of stuff down. The battery will do a little bit, but it's, we're talking minutes or maybe hours.
And Gulf County is one of four sites.
One of the first four in the state. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Appreciate it.
Danny, I, I know we've had voltage problems dealing with air conditioning and all for years out on the Cape and, and creates a lot of problem when the demand gets so high, the, the voltage drop is tremendous and people don't realize. But is that gonna boost us up?
Yes, sir.
So, so we can eliminate a lot of those problems, forest capacitors and all it, you know, creates during the peak time?
That, that's the, the main purpose of this.
Okay. Okay. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Yes, sir. Any more questions? Mr. Hammond?
If you could give the board just a ballpark estimate of the investment from Duke on this project.
Yes, sir. So, we're looking, and again, we, we haven't had it fully designed and we'll know more after construction, but this will be, you know, just to give you a range somewhere between 10 and 20 million dollars. So, pretty, pretty nice project.
Yes, for Gulf County? Yes, for this one?
Just for this one. Yes, sir.
I didn't want the small batteries to throw you off, this is. This is a, this is a really big investment that Duke's putting in our, our community. So, and a, and a very big positive, just like you said, to, to regulate the, the huge power spikes, especially during the summertime or peak demands. We're kind of full in the winter, too. And if they turn those heat strips on, they can pull more than the air conditioner. So, it, it will be a year-round benefit, but a big investment.
And, and a, and a cost saver for us as opposed to upgrading Indian Pass substation yet. So, this is, you know, it may be an expensive project, but there's still cost savings for our customers.
Mr. Collins, thank you. We really, we really appreciate it.
And, and thank you guys also for your assistance with the dead tree issue. We, we've wrapped up with that.
Appreciate it.
And we removed three times as many trees as we had told you originally. And that's certainly due to, to y'all's help with that, with the waiving of the tip and fee. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you. I'm Mr. Hammond. You still got the floor?
Yes, sir. Page one in your packet. Request for Opportunity Florida for a letter of support and for you to commit to their funding for this next year.
Any questions, concerns, commissioners? After being none, then I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? Emails? Any opposition? All right. Motion passes five and oh.
Page two. My recommendation on the review from the CBGR, CBGDR award, bid number 192032. The rankings came out as Gurus, number one, Gurus and Associates recommend we award to Gurus and Associates.
Any questions, concerns, commissioners? All right. I entertain a motion then. We accept.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any emails, Ms. Care? Any opposition? All right. Motion passes five and oh.
Warren has the next one.
All right, Mr. Yeager.
Hey, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just briefly, we had went out for an RFQ for the restaurant bar there at the golf course. We've been there a year. So, if you will give us permission, we had two folks that put in for that. We've actually looked over their proposal and had discussions with both. Still have to have some more discussions with further staff, but if we could get y'all's approval to award that based on staff recommendations and have the chairman or Michael sign off on that contract or any necessary documents.
Any questions, concerns, commissioners?
Warren, are we going for one year again? Or are you gonna extend? I know it's a little tough for restaurants just to buy in at one year. I don't know if you was gonna try to do a little longer?
We are. We're gonna try to do a little bit longer with, with the capabilities to extend even that for a, a year at the time if everything's going well and that kind of thing. It's a pretty good investment for some of these restaurants to come out there and invest in some of the equipment and all that kind of thing. So, we are gonna try to extend that to a, a three-year contract where we don't have to come back every year and ask you to do that.
I made that motion, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion?
One discussion, please. Mr. Yeager, or the local people?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right. Any more board discussion? Anyone in the audience? The audience? Any emails, Ms. Care? All right. Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Please, for Mr. Chairman, request from Secretary Burke and Sean Pierce for a letter to the Department of Social Resources for a grant for the Cape San Blas Lighthouse Company. I'd like the approval for the request.
Okay. All right. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Ms. Care? All right. Motion passes five and oh.
Same thing on the five, the question city, uh, this Pierce for the Cape San Blas.
So moved.
All right. Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? All right. Any emails, Ms. Care? All right. Any opposition to the motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Apologize, I guess it would help if I turned my mic on. We had a, a clip that was sent to us. I'd like to play now. It's about the coronavirus and, and going back to school. It was interesting. We had a lot of calls yesterday about the, the cities, a little confusion with the city deal. They didn't do an ordinance. They did a proclamation, emergency declaration. It is not a, a, an enforceable crime not to wear a mask. It's, but they're encouraging it and some businesses require it to go in, but we had a lot of, of calls about that. And, and again, it just brings up the whole nationwide phobia of, of this crisis that we're in. And again, at some point, you know, it's a, it's a risk when you leave your house. It's a risk to drive a car. It's a risk to, to, to do just about anything in life. So, it's a realized minute. I do think we need to put everything in perspective because this is certainly the most all-encompassing thing probably in the last hundred years. Spanish flu was a horrible thing, killed millions and millions and millions of people, 40 or 50 million people worldwide, probably the worst thing that's happened in the United States since the Civil War. But we have to think, we have shut down the world's largest economy. We really shut down the entire world. And in the last seven months, we've had 150,000 deaths in the United States. Never one of them tragic. It's been 475,000 abortions in the same time. Nobody seems to give one damn about that. So, again, we have to put things in perspective. We have to be smart. We have to wash our hands. We have to, you know, be smart. If you've got, you know, diabetes, if you've got serious things, you need to be careful. You need to be careful around your grandparents. You need to be careful just in life general. But at some juncture, we have to get this world back on, on an even keel. We can't keep printing money. Gold hit an all-time high, an all-time high in the history of the world yesterday. You know why? Because the money they keep printing is not worth nearly as much as it was a year ago before we started handing out all these free checks. So, again, we need to be smart. We need to be courteous to others, but we can't live in fear or we'll never leave our house and we'll all starve to death. So, that's my commentary. I think Sarah wants to give us an update about a few things.
All right. Morning, Ms. Hammond. How you doing? All right.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How are you doing?
All right.
Thank you, and I appreciate that. I, I too can agree that we, we don't want to live in fear. And I'm just here simply to just provide some updates about what's happening in our community. So, again, my name is Sarah Hines and I'm the administrator for the Florida Department of Health in Gulf and Franklin. And I'm actually here to discuss a, a business campaign with all of you today to see if we can get permission to work with the TDC in the chamber. So, that's really the purpose. But I also wanted just to take a moment to highlight a couple of updates about COVID-19 in our community. So, to date, we have a total of 265 cases. So, to date, we have a total of two hundred and sixty-five cases, that's what will show up on the floridahealth.gov website, and we've tested three thousand one hundred and thirty individuals, that's a lot for Gulf County, and those numbers are not duplicated. We get questions a lot about understanding recovery, and what does that mean? And, you know, understanding recovery numbers behind that positive total can be somewhat challenging, and that's been a big lesson learned from us, so the answer is that recovery is really case by case, and initially, we were looking at, you know, that ten to fourteen day marker across the board for positive individuals, but it really doesn't take into account, you know, the people who have symptoms who, it takes a little bit longer for them to recover, you know, or individuals with compromised immune systems who can remain infectious for as much as twenty days. So, recovery is kind of case by case, it's been a little challenging to maintain with the surge of new positive cases in both counties popping up, because remember, your Epi team, your epidemiological team covers Franklin too, so the amount of close contacts emerging with each case, you know, it's a lot, but, you know, I've reached out to the state, you know, what can we give them, what's a good calculation method moving forward? And they asked just to put that on hold, because they want to use a formula that's consistent across the state, so I get that. So then, I reached back out, and I was explaining, you know, if we can't measure recovery as our ticket to understanding if our community is at a healthy enough benchmark to move forward, you know, in alignment with the governor's reopening phases, because I'm with you, I want this to move forward already, and they suggested looking at the positivity trends, and so that's kind of what I'm monitoring now. So, each Friday, you'll see us share two weeks' worth of positivity data that's available for Franklin and for Gulf, and the data takes the positive cases that we've had by the week, and it compares it with the number of tests for that week, and it takes out any positive folks that have already been counted so that the number's not skewed. And, we're looking at this because this is what the governor's following for his reopening phases, and, but he's just looking at it from a daily lens. It's hard to do that in a small county, because the numbers just go up and down in their bar graph, so when you look at it from a rural county, we're looking at it from a week to week to make more sense. So, the good news is that across the state right now, the measure for positivity is beginning to stabilize, that's good, so it's been around eleven, the eleven percent mark for the past four days, and that's a really good sign, and I heard Dr. Rivkey's, our state surgeon general, talking about that yesterday, and we're just trying to get Gulf, you know, to align with that same track, and so we had a kind of a crazy July, a hundred and thirteen cases last week, we are testing a lot, as you guys know, so we had that climb, and we were mostly focused on, you know, just hospitalizations that may have aligned with that, with that jump. So, we were at eight hospitalizations and we jumped up to sixteen, but we do monitor that very closely with our hospital, just to make sure, you're right, like, they're getting the treatment that they need, the ones who go to the ICU, we track and make sure that they're able to recover, and we monitor the ones that are being discharged. And then the other good news, which I didn't mention, they didn't mention on that video, but there is a phase-three clinical trial coming out for the vaccine, so that's promising. It sounds like they're implementing a clinical trial in August, and with enough data to show that it's safe and effective, they could very well have a vaccine by the end of the year, or early next year, okay? So, hopefully, we won't be in this forever, and you're right, we can't live in fear, and I will say, Mr. Norton is an incredible superintendent, and he's got the best staff, they're completely committed to keeping the schools as safe as possible, and we're working so closely with them. And just so you know, the school health program that's within the school system is, they're also public health employees, so we'll all be working hand in hand. So, like I said, in the beginning of July, I think we had around twenty-three cases, and now we're up to two sixty-five, and I was talking to Jim McKnight, which I do from time to time, and, I'm almost on a swear.
Let me get you some more time, motion to extend.
Thank you.
Motion by Commissioner McCrone, second.
Okay, and so despite the cases, you know, we're mainly concerned about the ones that need, that would need hospital care. So, Michael's right, if you have comorbidities, if you have a compromised immune system, you really need to make sure that you're taking those extra precautions, and folks, you know, family members around those individuals need to keep them safe as well, and that's what it's been about since the beginning. So, we're all trying to continue to take that proactive approach to keep the positive cases from spreading, because, you know, what will happen is, you know, the more cases you can get, that can cause more spread, which can increase exposure, and we, it could impact, you know, individuals who have a harder time recovering, and that's what we're trying to avoid, particularly with people who have to be hospitalized, and then also our healthcare workers, because what you'll see with the nursing homes and the assisted living facilities, it's the healthcare workers that get exposure, and then they bring it into the congregated setting, and then they expose the patients, and we're really trying to closely monitor that effort. So, we've had some hospitalizations, we're up to sixteen now, we're trying to keep this down, we are monitoring those patients, we have had some positive cases in our long-term care facility that we are monitoring closely, so we have a really strong relationship with Shelley and Danielle, we have two assistance, two long-term care facilities in Gulf. And so we continue to do the education that we have since the beginning, we'll be in the schools educating the students as well about, you know, how to keep your hands clean, proper hygiene, avoid touching your face, you know, staying home when you're not feeling well, that's a, that's a big push, social distancing, obviously, and then those who are a contact to a positive case to quarantine. And, I know, these are the same focuses that everyone is tired of hearing us talk about. I completely get it, trust me, we're tired too. This response mode has been exhausting, and I just keep thinking about hurricanes, and we've got to be able to focus and balance the shift of response, I completely understand. But like you also saw during Hurricane Michael, we do not give up, not in public health, so we're invested in these communities, and we grew up in these counties too, so the health and safety of every single resident, it will always be important to us. And so, with businesses, you know, it really hasn't been easy for them, it took months after Michael for so many businesses to recover, to rebuild, some to this day are still in progress, and COVID-19 is certainly not making that any better from a business sustainability standpoint, and I know we have CARES funding that we're allocating to our businesses to keep them afloat, and I think people think that we close down businesses if there's a positive case or an individual, and that's actually, that's not the case. You know, we work closely with the owner, I, our phones are constantly ringing, talking to businesses, talking to people, and we try to ensure that we can isolate the positive, if there were true contacts to that positive, they're able to quarantine, there's sanitation practices in place, and we're, our goal is to get them, if they have to close, it's because, you know, it's a staffing issue. So, we try to get them back on board as timely as possible, and the staff that weren't impacted can keep the business running. So, we were trying to come up with some ideas, I talked to Kelly about this a couple weeks ago, Kelly Godwin from the TDC, how do we keep ensuring that our community is a healthy community for our residents, for our visitors, and so that our businesses can also stay afloat. So we came up with the idea to promote businesses during the pandemic, showcase them on our, on a webpage, recognize them for all being, you know, proactive, and we came across something that Flagler County TDC has right now called the Pledge to Prevent Campaign, and it's an opportunity to promote businesses that are just taking steps to keep their employees safe as well as their customers, and you can find the link at the Flagler TDC website. It's not a binding agreement, it's honestly, it's just a pledge, it's a hundred percent voluntary, and it's a way to get businesses involved. So, I've talked to so many, like I said, every day, they just want to keep folks safe, want to keep our businesses going, can't afford to lose any staff, so the business pledge focuses on like sanitation practices and allowing your employees to stay home when they're not feeling well, that's always a hard call, because, you know, people need that paycheck, but they have, they have to have that flexibility to stay home when they're not feeling well, and that's with any season, flu season, you know, was coming just around the corner, so that's important. You know, if they are wearing personal protective equipment, they wear it appropriately, because that's, that's an important piece of it, and of course, you know, practice social distancing, and I say that in the lens of just following the governor's reopening phases on how social distancing should be placed in a, in a business setting. So the Health Department, we have a little bit of money, we don't have a lot, we spent some on the schools, but we would love to, you know, provide some incentives, so logos, window stickers, certificates of appreciation to our businesses, place mats for restaurants, those are a big hit, Franklin's moving, Franklin County Board of County Commissioners is moving forward on this initiative, and place mats, for whatever reason, from the TDC lens, is a big, is a big ticket, hand sanitizer, just making it available for the businesses, and, and so, the goal behind that, to be able to move forward, is to be able to work with the TDC and the chamber, because we, we may have some funding and good ideas, but they have the skill sets to help to develop the page, and are willing to move forward if the board would accept this. So that's really the, the update that I wanted to bring to you all today, so, thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am, any questions, concerns?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Sarah, thank you, all you do here in Gulf County and in Franklin County and your staff, a couple of questions, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, you said we have two, so far to date, we have two hundred and sixty-five cases, all right, are those active cases, or is that cases from day one when we started?
All the way from day one.
All right, you can take numbers and twist them and twist them and twist them.
Yep, that's right.
That's one thing I like and I don't like about numbers. Of this two hundred and sixty-five, the people that tested positive in April, let's say, how many are we still, of this two sixty-five, what I'm trying to say is, how many are active right now?
Yeah.
Now, all two sixty-five are not active, so we're getting some misconceptions here on the numbers.
Yeah, that's why I want to take away from that whole ballpark number, because it doesn't serve us any good to know just overall totals.
Yeah, this is overall total that we have, that is tested in Gulf County.
And we get asked for that number a lot, and I provide any data that anybody requests, but I prefer to focus on, you know, what's the current positivity, because that's what's driving, going to drive the reopening phases.
So, right now, what I'm, Chairman, what I'm getting at, as to date, how many of these, of these two sixty-five, how many are actually still positive cases till they go through the quarantine?
Yeah.
And then they get retested, and I know I've been tested three times.
Yeah, I think we've all been tested.
Negative each time, the last time was with the Florida Department of Health here in Port St. Joe.
Yeah.
But, we've had, and another thing, that I was out this weekend, out on the beach and all, Gulf County, we're luckily, we haven't had a fatality so far.
Yes, that's right.
And we're, especially here in the south end of the county, a lot of tourists, and I look at other counties, surrounding counties, and they're not what you would call tourist counties, and they've had a lot of fatalities, and I, I say, you know, we've got all this outside influx coming in here, and I don't know if we're doing, if we're breathing air right, or what we're doing, but we don't want any fatalities, and our numbers, I know Franklin County was a very low number for a while, and all of a sudden, they started escalating up, Franklin did. But, anyway, where was I trying to go? We had a good turnout yesterday up in Weewahichka?
We did, and he can give some numbers.
Oh, okay, okay.
What was the total of the?
Mr. Chairman, I was just, my question was, are the two sixty-five, are they all still active cases?
Yeah, they're not, no. It's just, it's so, it's so much more challenging than, than we realize when it comes to explaining who was recovered, unless we contacted every single one of them.
I know a lot of it, it's privilege, and you can't make a lot of it, you can give the numbers, but no.
But what, what I, was explained after talking to the state, because I wanted to give this community the best data out there that makes sense, that doesn't scare us all, and they said, provide the positivity trends, provide them on a weekly lens so that it's appropriate to share with the community about what's going on in your community, because you're trying to align them with what the governor is using to drive his reopening phases, and so the positivity trend is actually an easier data point to look at at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
If I could, Ms. Chairman, Sarah, I never did hear, do you have a number on the active cases, that, the actual number that are active, or the ones that have been taken off?
What I could tell you for the last two weeks would give you probably the most accurate from, let me find it real quick, oh wait, I wrote it down over here, so last week, we had what, a hundred and thirteen positive cases? The week prior to that, we had forty-three positive cases, so those are all ones that we would be monitoring right now, that may or may not be out of isolation.
One thirteen and forty-three.
Uh-huh, but I, I really can't give you, unless we contacted all of the cases, like, like we said, it's, it's a lot more challenging, you can't just put a total number, like ten to fourteen days on each person from the date of their positive test, because everybody recovers differently. So, we want to say everybody is recovered after ten days, but what we have realized is that some people have symptoms that last longer than that, and then if they have, if they're, they have a compromised immune system, they could be infectious for twenty days. So, that number is not something I want to focus on as much as I'd rather focus on the positivity percentage. Does that make sense? Okay, I'm just making sure.
Now, I've seen in the, we're about eight percent, is that right?
Okay, well, that's if you use that overall total.
Okay, just going by your, y'all's?
Yes, yes, so what I'm, what I would like to use, and what we shared, what I'd like to use on Fridays, because it gives you that week concept, last week, from the July seventeenth to twenty-third timeframe, we had a hundred and thirty, a hundred and thirteen positives out of the total number of tests, which was five hundred and forty-eight, so that put us at twenty percent, so we thought, ooh, let's, let's see what this next week looks like, I'm hoping it's going to go down, and I think that it will, because before that, we had five hundred and ninety-one cases in the week prior, and we had forty-three cases, so something happened, we had a little bit of a spike, okay, and now we're just trying to get it back down, and the goal is, we want to get it, we want to meet it at ten percent, and then we want to keep moving down from there.
The other, I have two more questions, and I get, I'm sure we all get all kind of crazy calls, but say somebody from Gulf County goes to Bay County and gets tested, is that counted against Bay County, or is that counted here?
It would count as a Gulf County case.
Okay, okay.
Same thing, the same thing with Bay, because we're going to, these community pods are great, but we're gaining a lot of residents from other counties, they're coming in, they're not staying here, but they're getting tested here, and technically, we have to test, you know, people who are symptomatic, or regardless of where they live, but we, if they're positive and they're from Bay and they just came to get tested, goes straight back to Bay.
Last question I have, I promise.
No, you're fine.
If you get tested and you're positive?
Yes.
You're under quarantine, and, and, you know, you hear all kind of rumors get started, but this is not here, this is, I had some friends in Bay County ask me the question, but you go back, you're tested again, are you counted positive again?
No.
You see what I'm saying?
No, if you're positive, you only get counted once.
Okay, okay.
I do not, we do not skew the data.
Okay, I would just, it wasn't here, I'm not, I would just, you know, as a general in the state, how are they counting those retests is what the question was.
They only count it once.
Okay.
And they're, and they're, oh, the same thing for, for negatives as well. Okay, do you want to?
Okay, that's all I have.
Okay, no, that's a great question, because we actually get asked that a lot, so thank you for asking.
All right, any more questions?
Just real quick, I want to make a statement, and I'm over it.
I know.
And I know, you know that I'm over it, but I want to, I want to give kudos to you and your staff especially. I'm not going to get tested again unless I'm made to, unless I'm sick, because, you know, it takes too long, so you, some people are already well by the time they get their test, but, but at the end of the day, your staff, it is hot.
Yeah.
And the last time I was tested, it was probably ninety-five degrees, and I don't know how many of y'all tested that day, but I think it was a couple hundred.
It was.
I can't imagine the toll on your staff to stand out there in all that PPE covered up, hot, you were there, you were there, everybody was there, but I mean, it's miserable anyway, and some of them are in plastic, and some of them are in gowns, and they're all faced up, kudos to your folks, don't let them burn out, because I can tell you, this has gone on, we thought the hurricane was long.
I know.
This is, this is a nightmare, but I do give you, your staff, kudos, because they're putting their selves at risk, and they're in miserable conditions, because it's outside testing and it's hot, so tell them thank you for us.
I appreciate you saying that, I really do, it feels like you're wearing a garbage bag outside, it's awful, but we do it because, again, we care about the community, and he's, and he's right, we're also worried about hurricanes, because we know the magnitude of energy that that takes to respond to, so, and I also appreciate you saying, you know, to not get tested just for the sake of getting tested, because we really do want to utilize the, the testing kits that we have for, for folks who may have had an exposure or actually have symptoms, so I do appreciate you mentioning that as well. Did you have an update?
Yeah, that's right, yeah.
Okay, okay.
Hey, good morning, everybody, for those of you that don't know me, I'm Hunter Bailey, I'm now the preparedness planner for the Health Department here in Gulf County, so first, I just wanted to thank all the commissioners and county staff for allowing and continued support of our COVID-19 testing pots, so point of testing, that we've had here in the past three months. I just wanted to give a quick rundown really quick, we've tested twice at Lake Alice Park in Weewah, with a total of one hundred and ninety-eight individuals tested, we were at Salinas Park once, tested a hundred and fifty-four there, we've tested thirty staff and residents at Beacon Hill Assisted Living Facility, we were at Washington Improvement Group once and tested a hundred and one individuals there, seventy-five staff at Crawl Shores Nursing Home, sixty-five residents at Crawl Shores, we tested at Howard Creek Fire Department and tested fifty-two there, one hundred and seventy-nine at Veterans Memorial Park in Beacon Hill, we, the day that you were speaking of, at the Gulf Health Department out here drive-through site, we tested two hundred and eighty-seven there that day. We've been to Honeyville Community Center now twice, yesterday being one of them, and we've tested a total of five hundred and fifty-five individuals there, and then overall, in our clinic location alone here in Weewah, or here in Port St. Joe and in Weewah by appointment only, we've tested one thousand two hundred and fifty-eight individuals over the past three months, so a little over a total of total tests by the Health Department alone has been a little under three thousand, two thousand nine hundred and fifty-four, so we appreciate y'all's support through that. Like you were saying a minute ago, that number may not exactly add up to what shows on the dashboards, Sarah, so that we have a little over three thousand tests here in the county, so the accession number that goes along with each individual's test, so for instance, I've been tested three times myself, just because to keep up with it throughout the instance, I'm only counted one time, so it says William H. Bailey, accession number COVID-19, and I have a lab requisition route to it, all three of those tests are under that same one. For someone who tests positive four times, because they continue to get tested throughout those fourteen days and they still show positive, it's counted as one test, same per negativity rate. So at this time, we're going to discontinue our community COVID-19 testing sites, just wanted to update you guys on that, so like you were saying, it's hot, we're tired, it takes a lot of staff to run these sites, anywhere between fifteen to twenty people to run a site for about six hours to test individuals, but however, we're still going to continue testing at the Health Department here in Port St. Joe, Monday through Friday by appointment, so you can just give us a call at eight five oh, two two seven, twelve seventy-six for an appointment, we're usually booked up the day if you call, but we can probably get you in the day after that, that'll be Monday through Friday, and then we're in the process of hiring new nursing staff to help us expand that option to test in Weewah up to two to maybe three days a week, as of right now, we're up there the first and third Friday of every month, so we're doing appointments up there as well, so just wanted to give that quick update, and again, thank you all for everything that you've done for us. Do you have any questions about what I just gave, or anything else for either Sarah or I?
Any questions from Mr. Hunter? Mr. Sarah, all right, so we, I believe you want us to, you need some, you want us to support the, your plan?
Okay, Kelly, I don't know if you want to mention anything to this, but in order to work with the TDC, we wanted to make sure it was okay with the board, and get permission to have a webpage on the TDC website, okay, on the TDC website that just has a Pledge to Prevent Campaign, to promote all the businesses with their pictures.
All right, any questions, concerns, Commissioner? Questions, concerns, if there have been none, then, I mean, I don't have a problem with supporting, I entertain a motion and we move forward.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Ms. Care? All right, motion passes five and oh, thank you, ma'am.
Thanks, Sarah.
Appreciate you all, thank you.
That's all I have at this time, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Novak is on the phone, Mr. Novak?
I'm here, Chairman, good morning.
Good morning.
I have nothing at this time, please.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Yeager? Summers?
Yes, I have one thing. This morning, it is for the County Extension Office, advertised to sale, it's bid number nineteen twenty dash thirty-three, sale of a two thousand and two Buick Century, the recommendation is to award to the highest bidder, which was William R. Deason Senior, in the amount of three hundred and sixty dollars. in the amount of $360.
All right, questions, concerns, Commissioners? All right, do I entertain a motion that we overheard?
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? All right, any emails, Ms. Care, on this? All right, any opposition? All right, motion passes 5-0. All right, thank you, ma'am. Ms. Herring, you got anything?
Yes, sir. I would like to recommend a date for our final hearing. If September 23rd, which is a Wednesday, at 5:01 PM, works for the board, I would just need y'all to approve that and we will plan accordingly.
All right. Any questions, Commissioners? September 23rd, 5:01?
Yes, sir.
None? If there being none, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this final hearing date? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Ms. Care?
Either final.
Any opposition to that motion? Our motion passes 5-0.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Mr. Cock?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a quick update. In the last month, we have started Gulf County Solid West Transfer Station. It is open Monday through Saturday from 8 to 4. Substantial change from the way it's been run the last several years is we are open all day on Saturday, and I don't think the word has gotten out that good yet. I know the Commissioners have been getting phone calls and y'all have been letting your constituents know, but just wanted to say it today in the meeting, if anybody's listening, we are open from 8 to 4 on Saturdays.
Okay.
So for the working man, Monday through Friday, you're at work, Saturday, you have all day to get your stuff together and make it out of here.
Appreciate it. Yeah, that's good. Appreciate that. All right, Mr. Collinsworth, I knew I had to come back to you, but. Okay, all right. All right. Mr. Hart? Got an update for us? Yes, sir.
As far as putting the courthouse back together, it's been quite, in here, I guess, it's been moving along. They've probably put in over 500 wooden panels on the interior. They're down to less than a dozen. And there are around some obstacles that's going to have to be worked in. It's not as far along as it looks. All the panels are installed, but they've got to come in and set some nails and put them up and clean them off and all, so there's a little more work there than what it would appear, just getting close. Contractor hadn't committed to me, but I would say probably end of next week, he should be wrapping that up. Got one bathroom left, and the property pre-resolve is, I'm trying to get it probably next week. That's going to have me cut the water off the building to do that one. That's one reason I've been holding off. But that'd be scheduled. I'll, I'll let people know. But I don't know of any major issues, but things are going well.
That's good, that's good. Any questions, Commissioners, from Mr. Hart?
You going to try to do this after the closing of the courthouse? You said you had to cut the water off.
Yes.
Are you going to do that after the business hours?
Well, probably after or on Saturday.
Anyway, not during business hour.
Right. That's, that's not turned out well in the past.
Any more questions, concerns, Commissioners? All right, thank you, Mr. Hart, appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Horton?
All good.
All good. All right, Mr. Joe Paul?
Good morning.
Good morning, sir.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. This is going to be somewhat lengthy. I don't know if you wanted to take a quick break before we start, or if you want me just to start blowing through.
That's, that's a roll.
All right, you have your packages that I sent you?
Yes, sir.
If you look at item number one, it's called CARES Act, CRF Funds, and the sub-recipient agreement. I've set a memorandum in for you, which is item number one on your list. The Florida Housing Finance Committee has received $120 million in what they call CRF Funds, which is Corona Relief Funds. This is used for rental assistance, mortgage payments, and buy downs. The share that we're going to get is $175,000. I'd like to recommend, due to the ship, HHRP Department administering the HHRP program, and seeing veterans as well, it is our request that the Board of County Commissions approve the proposal attached to allow the administrator to sign necessary contract with Appalachia Regional Planning Council to administer this fund, according to the Gulf County Procurement Policy Number Four, parentheses seven, an exception due to the timeframe required of expenditure of funds, which is no later than December 30th of this year, creating a critical delivery schedule, availability of service, unique technical requirements, legislative direct, and prior experience of the vendor, resulting in the cost savings to the county. As noted to the amount, if you look at the yellow tab on your list there, is the agreement with the county, also noted the amount of the agreement is within the county administrator's policy to approve. I also attached the entire agreement, which must be signed by the, by the chairman. I'd also request that the board approve this agreement, so that we can receive this money. Once the agreement is sent to Florida Housing, the money will be deposited in our ship account. If you look at the proposal from the Appalachia Regional Planning Council, you'll notice that they're going to have two people here, a couple of days a week, and they'll do as much as they can working at home with the applicants. We are authorized a 10% administrative cost. They have agreed to do this, if you look on page three of their proposal, for $14,000 are only 8%. That leaves the other 2% for one of us in my office to be the liaison with them, and that's only to liaison with them in getting the funding, the checks cut, and out to the different people. I'd like to recommend that you do approve this under the policy number four, parentheses seven.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, any questions, concerns? Sam, you want to add something?
We, we need a couple of separate motions.
Okay.
I need to disclose that I have a conflict, because I sit on the ARPC, ARPC Board as a governor's appointment. You're going to make the decision, I'm just going to execute, so I just want that for the record. Commissioner McDaniel needs to abstain.
I'll have to abstain. I represent this board and Gulf County on ARPC, so I will be abstaining and signing necessary forms.
Okay. So, so I would suggest the first motion that we accept from Florida Housing, the grant agreement. The second motion would be.
All right, hold on a second. Hold on a second. So we need to accept the money. All right, so I entertain a motion that we accept the money from Florida Housing. All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this, accepting this CARES Act funding? Anyone in the audience? All right, any E, oh, she's gone. Check the emails. Just in case. CARES Act. Think you're having a hard time.
I am. That's logically true, we have to.
All right. All right, any opposition to that motion? Our motion passes 5-0. All right, second one?
I abstain, Mr. Chairman.
No, 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 you, you.
You're good on the first.
You're good on the first one, yeah, you can.
This would be for, for ARPC to administer this for 8%. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
Of, of the admin money.
All right, so we want to accept ARPC to administer this?
Yes, sir.
One, one quick thing, I'm sorry, that, that is to commence one August.
Okay. All right, any questions, concerns, Commissioners? You want to award this to ARPC? All right, now, my, my only question is this, you said that you, you got a conflict?
I just have a conflict, because I sit on that board, I mean, it's, it's an organization we're members of, it's out of an abundance of caution, no problem with me signing it, I just need to put that on the record.
Okay, all right. All right, just wanted to make sure you still.
Michael?
Yes, sir.
If you want to, we can have the chairman.
That'll be, that'll be fine.
Okay, all right.
The only problem is, you have to change, it's not under my agreement, it's because we're a member of that organization, so you don't have to bid it. So it's the board's decision, not under my spending authority.
Okay, all right. So we accept this ARPC proposal, and I'll just, and I'll sign all the necessary documents, Chairman. Okay, all right.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. All right, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? All right, any emails?
No emails.
All right. Any opposition to that motion? You go, uh.
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, all right. Motion passes 4-0 with one abstention.
Now, the, the third thing that we need to set up, and, and Joe and I had, and Lynn had discussions yesterday, the board needs to set some parameters for this. Just because you spent all your money you got from the government doesn't mean that we need to pay you, you know, because you, you know, misspent your money. This needs to be for folks who are actually affected, lost a job, didn't get unemployment compensation, or had hospitalized folks, or had healthcare or, or childcare costs. We need to set a cap. This is not going to go far. This is, you know, the actual money that will go to the public will wind up being about $155,000 out of this money. So it, you know, this, and it's got a pretty good window from March to possibly as late as December. So, so the board needs to set a maximum. We'll probably need to have a special meeting next week to determine this, unless you want to do it now, but you need to set a maximum, and we need to, to have some requirements where folks were actually had a hardship that was not of their own making. And what we discussed yesterday a little bit about was folks that aren't eligible for unemployment, business owners, especially like haircutters, waitresses, bartenders, people that may get 1099s that aren't technically employees, they're, they're self-employed, they're not eligible for, for unemployment benefits. So it wouldn't be for folks that got the 800 and something dollars a week, and the stimulus check and whatnot, it would be for folks that didn't get those things and got behind, or had childcare, or some of these other, or hospitalized parents or, or family members that they were taken care of. So we need you to set those where we can help maybe, maybe 65 people, potentially, for rental assistance and/or mortgage assistance.
Yes, sir. And they, they actually agree in here, they talk about buy downs, but that would be somebody that needed to do a, a principal buy down based on the coronavirus. I think that would be few and far between. I did receive this morning, the paperwork, the criteria, the funding sheet they have to fill out and everything, I've not had a chance to review all of it, so if we did do a special meeting next week to set that, I think it'd be good, because then I'd have that stuff ready that I just received like 10 minutes before I walked in here.
And the last thing, we would need to do a lottery again, because it can't be a first come, first serve, it needs to be of, everybody that, that does qualify should be able to have an equal shot, like we did with the HHRP.
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. So we don't need no motion?
No, no, but I mean, if you have some input, if you, you want to have some input, we may have a special meeting next week. We, staff needs some input from the board to, to come up with some recommendations for you, but that's my thoughts. If, if you got the full unemployment, the 800 and, what is it, 875 a week, and you got your stimulus check, and you just, you know, went to Biloxi for the weekend, now that shouldn't qualify. But if you didn't get unemployment, or you had childcare costs and, and other things that happened because of this coronavirus, then, then you should be eligible. But, so we're going to need a cap, we're going to need some parameters, and we're going to need to have a lottery at some time in the future after we advertise appropriately.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this agreement allows us to pay as far back as one March, and as far ahead is 30 December.
Okay. Any, any, any thoughts, concerns, Commissioners, what Mr. Hammond just said? I, I just can see one, and I mean, and I, when, when Mr. Paul mentioned that yesterday, the only scenario, I was thinking about what one scenario was, let's say, like you said, they did get a stimulus and they did get the 800, but it's a two-family, so I mean, it's a, it's a husband and a wife with three kids, and the wife was working, but she had to cut back on the hours because there's no child, I mean, she had to stay home and take, so I can see then, maybe we're going to have to help somebody like that, that's, I mean, that's my, that's what I was thinking, because I hate to handicap that person, because the, the wife or the husband had to stay home with the kids, even though they got that, but they still losing their hours at, at the job, so.
Child, childcare is certainly one of the criterias I would think we'd need to look at, because, you know, schools were closed and, you know, other things that were out of folks' control. So if they, if they had legitimate expenses like that, or health issues, then I think we need to, to take that into account.
All right. All right, Commissioners? We need some ideas. What you thinking? Mr. Paul going to put some stuff together, and you going, we'll come back for a special, and then you'll recommend us some things, but he probably need a little bit, I mean, need some recommendations from us also.
I promise you, the phone calls are going to start. The first day, Florida Housing set up the call center, they had 29,900 calls. We've had about 30. But out of that 30, I've sent forwarded you, Mr. Chairman, the emails from the, from the two or three people that we have that are concerned right now. It may, it may get a lot bigger, and that's why we agreed to do some sort of a criteria ahead of time to make sure that we're in line, and that when ARPC starts this, they know exactly what we want.
Let me ask you, so ARPC not only going to do hours, but they also going to do, are they going to do in other counties?
They're doing Calhoun and Liberty County right now, they're doing all of Calhoun's, including HHRP.
Is it possible that you can ask them to kind of let you see what Calhoun's recommendations are?
Sure.
So we can kind of get, we can kind of have an ideal also?
Be glad to.
They're going to administer it, but I don't know if they have their plan ready or not. We'll, we'll find it, look at it.
I think they're all, I think they're all jumping, just like we are, to try to get this money in, because it is available, and we're, you know, we're trying to get it as fast as we can.
Yeah, if we can, if we can, like I said, we, we getting it, we might as well use it if we can.
If we can help our, the citizens of Gulf County, that's what we need to do.
Something else I need to say is that this, this money is not going to go to the individual that applies for it, it's going to go to the lending institution and/or the rentor, excuse me, the landlord. So they won't be getting the check from the county, it'll be paying their rent or paying the, the, their mortgage up to a cap.
Now, it will pay utilities also?
Yes, sir, it will pay utilities as well.
Okay.
But, but in order, again, we're gonna get $155,000, basically, that will wind up going to the, to the individuals, in rough terms. What kind of cap are we wanting to set on this per individual?
So, so basically, basically, we need to, if a mortgage, if you got a mortgage, and let's say you're paying $1,000 a month, and you say go from March to December?
We, we can pay legally from one March to 30 December.
Alright, uh...
And, and that's my question. Either we're gonna help 65 people, or we're gonna help 12 people. I mean, if, if you could take that the same way, if you, if you, if your mortgage is probably more reasonable at 1,500, and we do it for nine months, the money's not gonna go far. If, you know, some people rent for $600 a month, some people rent for $2,000 a month. So I mean, I think we need to have a cap, maybe as low as 2,000 per person. Meaning, you know, we'll contribute a portion, but not all.
Yeah, I don't see us being able to pay a mortgage from March to December, or, you know, we, we gotta help majority of the people. You know, you're gonna have to put at least, maybe a thousand or $2,000 cap on, you know, the amount you can, can get.
The lower the cap, the more folks could be eligible.
That's right.
So, so if y'all just wanna think about that, and, and get with me with ideas, and we'll try to come up with something for, for next week. Because we'd love to turn this money over quickly. I mean, I'm assuming we're gonna get this money in a week or two, as soon as we get this agreement back. So the quicker we can get the program out, we're gonna have to advertise, we're gonna have to take applications, of course, and, and go through that, so it...
Okay.
The sooner we come up with our, with your plan and your priorities, the sooner we can get this money out.
The money must be expended by 30 December. Whatever's not expended will be returned.
Okay. Alright, so it's, so we'll, we'll, we'll have a special meeting next week. You'll get with each individual. Commissioners, once Mr. Paul get us something to look at, then, okay?
That's good.
I'll have you something ready.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Paul, do you have any anticipation of how many people will sign up for this program?
No, sir. Uh, Mr. Commissioner, right now, we've had, like I said, we've had 30 phone calls, but we've only had three individuals that actually emailed me their information to, to kind of know what they're doing. Most of them are in the, to be evicted soon status. And like I said, I've not done any investigation of them to see what they made, what they've done. There's a quick one-pager that we received this morning that they fill out, and give us the information of who to contact to verify what they're behind on and what they're doing.
Well, I was just trying to figure out in my mind, you know, that, that amount of money divided by the number of people, times the dollar amount, just trying to see what participation was gonna be.
Yes, sir, I have no idea at this time.
Alright. Okay.
Go, go on?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Okay, item number two in your packet. This is a memorandum. The mobile homes that we purchased, the one-bedroom mobile homes that we purchased in the first round of HHRP, we got the mobile home for $39,300, $350. We've gone back out, because we had a number of mobile homes to order in the second round. The mobile home company that we got the mobile homes from is not able to meet that price. So the first thing I'd like to ask is your permission to bid to be the purchase of 13 mobile homes with an option to purch, purchase an additional 13, depending on the number of qualified applicants that get approved in Phase III for the very low period, which ends next Thursday.
Alright, any questions, concerns, commissioners? You're gonna re-bid?
Mr. Paul?
Sir?
Uh, this trailer company that you're purchasing these, uh, one bedrooms from, is there others out there? You say you no longer can get them at the 40,000?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct?
The, the mobile home that we, that we were getting came from Clayton Homes. It was called The Murphy, it's a one-bedroom home. That mobile home, actually Clayton has stopped making it. We were the only ones buying them, basically, is what they told us. They can build the two-bedroom and charge from 39 to 46, almost 47. And they can build a two-bedroom just as easy as they can build the one-bedroom, so they're, that's why they've talked about not purch, not manufacturing the one-bedrooms in.
So in other words, correct me, we, we will go from one bedroom to two bedrooms?
No, sir, we're still gonna bid the one-bedrooms. There are other one-bedrooms available. If you'll give me permission here to bid these, the next item on your list will explain that.
Okay, I'm sorry, alright. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Paul, let me, let me ask you this. When you, when you go out and re-bid this, is it possible just to, just to get a ballpark figure, or just have, just also bid for a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom?
Yes, sir.
Reason why I say that, because if you said, you said that, that Clayton could did, do the two-bedroom for 46,000?
Yes, sir, Clayton could. That, that's what they sell it for.
Okay.
We've actually purchased two, two-bedrooms for the disaster relief program from them, and I want to say it was 46.9, wasn't it, Lynn? 46.9 was our cost, delivered, set up, hooked up.
I mean, if it, if it, yeah, if you don't mind, just, I just, just, let's just see what the, when you re-bid it, just do one-bedroom slash two-bedroom.
Alright, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Paul, I just heard you say that the 46, or the 45, or 44, whatever, they would probably build them if we give them an order for 13, or 15, or 20, whatever. But that includes the setup. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that includes, that includes...
I mean, that's a whole nine yards.
Delivery, lock key job. Setup, everything except the pad.
The pad.
Right, we're gonna have to re-bid the pads like we did before, but that's down the road. I gotta get these bids in.
I know the setup is cost, uh...
Well, that's why we went up from 40 to 41, because of the electrical issues we had hooking them up. But this is hookup, electric, water, sewer, all the plumbing hookups, that is included in that price. Tie-down, steps, the code, everything.
Okay, any more questions, concerns?
I got one. Mr. Paul, have you tried, um, have you done any research to see if you can buy factory-direct and save some additional dollars?
I have attempted to buy factory-direct, and they've all said that they're, they're loyal to their distributors.
Okay.
I tried that right off the bat.
Alright, any more questions, concerns? I, there being none, I entertain a motion that we re-bid.
So moved, rebidding, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Seconded, seconded by Commissioner Rich. Alright, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Miss Care? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
Okay, item number three, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Again, we're gonna talk about mobile homes, and you've already given me the permission to re-bid. You'll notice on here that the lowest price that I've received to date without bidding them for a one-bedroom mobile home is $42,290. Now, we bid them, we could come in less than that. I don't feel like we're gonna get much less than that. This does not include the pad, the electric pole, if needed, septic tank inspection, or other unanticipated costs, which we came up with the reason we went to 41. I'm requesting that you increase your maximum of 41,000 to a maximum of 45,000 for the very low income only. This will do two things. Number one, it should give us enough money to be able to do these trailers when they get bid. And if we spend up to 45, this is in the very low income, the extra money will help you reach your set-aside of the 30%, the $640,000 that we're shy right now.
Alright, questions, concerns, commissioners? Alright, alright, and then there being none, we entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, to 45,000. Got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Any emails, Miss Care? Any opposition to that motion? Alright, motion passes five and oh.
Number four in your package, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. You, you know that we've, with the very low incomes, we have leveraged some money occasionally with the UMCOR folks to do different things with the homes. This one is for an applicant who is in the very low income category. She qualifies for the one-bedroom. However, the applicant, number one, is a victim of domestic violence. She's a victim of Hurricane Michael, and she has one dependent. My recommendation is you allow the funding that would be allocated for the purchase of the mobile home under the HHRP program to be used instead for this applicant to purchase the home she is currently renting. I spoke to the owner of this home originally. She wanted 49,000 for the home. It's a small two-bedroom on Van Drive. When I talked to her, she agreed to reduce the price of the home to 39,000. If this is approved today, I'll have a contract from her. If she does that, we can purchase this home. This lady is a hairdresser who's been out of work. If we purchase this home for her, and you agree to the $40,000 only being leveraged, this will include all the closing costs, and this person who will soon be homeless if she doesn't buy this house, because the homeowner is putting it up for sale, it'll give her a permanent home to live in. Again, understanding that she has to live in the home five years, like we did with the mobile homes.
Alright, thanks, sir. Any questions, concerns, commissioners?
Yes, please, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Paul, closing costs. You're gonna purchase, or you can possibly purchase for 39,000, uh, with the 40,000. Tell me about the closing costs.
Closing costs are a little over 800 bucks.
So you still, with the closing costs, you still come in under the 40,000?
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I have the drafts, HUD one actually laying on my desk in there right now.
If I could, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Um, Mr. Paul, is this house, I, I don't wanna buy something that we gotta go back and do, you know, rebuild. It's not in repair, needing repair, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir. No, sir, uh, I've looked at the house. It looks in good shape. There are no inspections required. The lady is super happy with the house, and very emotional about even the opportunity to, to be able to get this house for her and her son.
And I, and I'm 100% we on that, I'm glad they are. And I just don't wanna them to purchase something in a, a year down the road they need a roof, you know, so.
No, the roof looked in good condition to me when I looked at it. Now, I'm not an inspector, but the shingles looked in good shape.
Just to, just to cover us, do, do we need to send an inspector just to look at it?
Wouldn't hurt.
Okay.
You can have the building department go look at it.
Okay, okay. We'll get Mr. Collins to take care of that for us.
So if you wanna do it contingent upon the building department review, that'd be fine.
Okay, y'all good with that?
And, and I'm fine, and, and I wanna go back and say, I don't wanna hold this lady up from getting a place to live, but by no means, and I just don't want her to get in a bad situation down the road. She, you know, she comes back and says, you know, the roof's in terrible, you, you know what I'm saying, but...
She, she does understand that if she gets this also, uh, this works just like a, a normal ship. For five years, she's gotta live in it. For five years, she can't get anything from us.
That's right.
You, you don't get a lot of $40,000.
No, I agree, but I, I don't want her to get in a bad, you know, because like Mr. Paul said, five years, she can't get anything else, you know, so.
I think this was like a fishing camp, a small, small...
Small two-bedroom camp on Drive 511th Van Drive, or 510? I can't remember, it's 510 or 511, it's in District 1.
And I'll make the motion, I'm fine with that.
Alright, I got a motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rich. Alright, any further board discussion?
Is this conditional on the inspection or not?
Question? Okay, okay, alright.
Now, you said, if we approve this for five years, she lives in the house, and we can't do any work to the house for five years.
That's correct.
Is that correct now?
This, this HHRP is just like a ship.
Okay. Alright, I'm, I'm good with that, I'm good. I just make the purchase, I am.
Yeah, I, I mean, it, you know, there's no sense in doing an inspection if you're gonna, you know, we can't do anything for five years anyway, so. Motion has this.
Okay, alright. Alright, motion by Commissioner Macron, seconded by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Miss Care?
Yes, sir.
Any opposition to that motion? Alright, motion passes five and oh.
Okay, item number five. Our offices again received an application for HHRP funding, this applicant. Her name is Sherry Lanier. She is no kin to Ms. Lynn Lanier. She lives, uh, on, is it Second Street? Second Street in Weewaw, which is again, I believe, District 1. She has a home there that is in total disrepair, severe electrical issues. She has a severely handicapped daughter. We were gonna go in there and try to provide something for her in the way of rehab. Between what I've looked at, and what Dan Kirk from UMCOR's looked at, the house is basically not livable. We are going to ask the building department to go look at it, just to make 100% sure. That being said, UMCOR is willing to build her a two-bedroom, one-bath house, if we will leverage our $40,000 against what they're gonna do. They have the Mennonites coming in to do these houses. They are standing a house, once the slab is done, in three days. You wanna see some work being done, they built one over, I believe, in your area, Mr. Chairman?
Did, yes, sir.
In three days, the house was stood, ready to go. My request is that we leverage the 40,000 only, not the 41 or the 45 that we've agreed to, the 40,000 only, so that UMCOR can build this house. They have provided me letters of support agreeing to build these houses for these people. Again, they have to live in it five years. And believe it or not, they're building this two-bedroom house for about $68,000, not including appliances.
Alright, it's a great deal. I think the, uh, the one that was built in our, you know, my district, Lowe's end up donating their appliances, so...
The St. Vincent de Paul folks and everybody are dealing with Lowe's, even Ace Hardware, to get appliances for that kind of stuff. They're working on furniture and appliances for the one-bedrooms we've done already.
That's good.
Uh, they're just, those folks are wonderful to work with.
Alright, questions, concerns, commissioners?
Question?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Paul, what about demolition? It will go back on the same property, the same site?
Yes, sir. They're, they're gonna take care of demo and everything. We're leveraging our $40,000, they're gonna demo the house and build a new.
Build a new one?
Yes, sir. Just like the one for Grady Ray McDaniel and Mrs. Finch that we talked about a month ago.
Good deal.
Mr. Chairman, it's my understanding they, they do have volunteers that are coming in to do those demolitions on those homes.
And on Second Street, I'm trying to, Commissioner Rich, where on Second Street?
Not far from the Credit Union.
It's gonna be across from, I got you.
Charlie Patterson, I believe.
Yeah, I know where it is, I know where it is, okay. But we spot them 40,000, they do all the demolition, they come in, build a house, a lock key job.
Yes, sir.
We just, this is kinda like the moderate, basically, where we...
Well, moderate, we give them down payment. We, the moderates, we give down payment assistance to. This is gonna get a house she's gonna owe nothing on. She's just gotta live there five years.
Okay, alright. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, any, any more questions?
It's a wonderful blessing for this family.
Yes.
This program that the UMCOR folks are bringing is definitely an answer to prayer for a lot of people that we were just handcuffed with.
Yes. Alright, any more questions? Alright, well, now let's move forward. I entertain a motion then that we leveraged this 40,000 to help.
So moved, Mr. Chairman, 40,000.
Commissioner McDaniel. Who seconded?
Okay, item number six.
Hold, hold up, Mr. Paul.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We approved it yet. Seconded by Mr. Rich. Alright, anyone in the audience? Any further board discussion? Alright, anyone in the audience? Any emails, Miss Care?
Yes, sir.
Alright, any opposition? Alright, motion passes five and oh. Go ahead, Mr. Paul.
The difference is, Mr. Chairman, I've already crossed my legs, you're probably in better shape than I am. Item number six. Same scenario. This is for Ms. Marjorie Phillips, who is in District 3. Very low income. They will build a house for her if we'll leverage the $40,000.
Alright, same, same, UMCOR?
Yes, sir, same, same, same thing.
Okay, any questions, concerns? Alright, for being none, this, I entertain a motion.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, motion by Commissioner Macron.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner McDaniel. Any further board discussion?
Now, that, that does keep the five-year.
Yes, sir, each one of them is a five-year. They'll have to sign the, the note with us that they will live in the house for five years, which I am preparing for the attorney review.
Okay, alright.
Ma'am? Marjorie Phillips. If you want me to, I'll send you all these addresses when we get through, so you'll have them. You need them too, Ms. Lynn?
Alright, anyone in the audience? Alright, any opposition to the motion? Any emails, Miss Care? Any opposition? Alright, motion passes five and oh.
Last but not least, Mr. Chairman, on page seven. We have a, a young lady here, Ms. S E B Hall, who is in District... We have a young lady here, Ms. S E B Hall, who is in District Four. She is currently ninety-four years old. We did a, what we call a small ship, which is the one we do through CCDF, Christian Community Development Fund. We did this for her almost four years ago, where we provided her a handicap bathroom, complete handicap accessible bathroom. At that time, her air conditioning unit was fine, working in good shape, it has since gone out. This ninety-four-year-old lady has been without air conditioning this entire summer. Her current ship doesn't satisfy till December twelfth of this year. The small ship that we did for her, the maximum we did was seventy-five hundred. I would request that the board forgive the remaining five months of this small ship loan in order to provide emergency assistance to this applicant by providing her with a new air conditioning unit.
All right, thanks, sir, any questions, concerns, commissioners? Being anonymous, I entertain a motion that we.
So moved to help this young lady.
Second. All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner McCrone, any further board discussion? Let me just, I just want to say this, when I become ninety-four years old, we got a board that's able, that's willing to help, help me in a situation like this, because, man, it does people, it does people good, man, it makes people, you know, feel, you know.
Feel wanted.
Yeah, feel wanted, when you, when you help them out, so. I want to thank the board, I want to thank our staff, Mr. Paul, you guys for helping these people, man, bringing it to the board, so we can be able to give back to the community, it's truly a blessing. I mean, so I just want to thank you guys, man, it means a lot, it really does.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, along those lines, I know it's mid-July now, and it's gonna get hotter in August, but if we'd have known sooner, we could have helped her sooner, so, you know, going out to the people that, that needs some, especially our elders, if you need something, let us know, see what we can do.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman, one quick thing, our maximum on this, under the small ship or CCDF program, is ten thousand dollars. And that will cover the installation of the complete air conditioning system.
All right, so I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner McCrone, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Miss Care? All right, Mr. Hammond, you want to add something?
You got both parts, now you've forgiven the old one, and you've approving the new one.
Okay.
Correct.
That's correct.
You good with that, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right, any opposition? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, we need to take a break.
I think Clay's got something, we've got somebody that's been waiting for an hour, and I was gonna suggest that we, if we can announce the bids after Clay and Kelly, I guess, who else, Jim might have something, but, and where we don't have to wait fifteen minutes to open the bids, that they can do those and be tabulating them, and then come back, if we could.
Okay, so I need to go to, you said you got somebody waiting an hour?
We had somebody that signed up, that's been waiting, we gave them a preliminary time of nine forty-five, but.
You want to go ahead and bring him in, and let me get Clay, come on up to Smallwood.
You want me to go get him, Mr. Chairman?
Please.
Good morning.
Yes, sir.
Couple things for you, need board permission to advertise for 387, the Stockwhip Road, for the construction, and also an RFQ for the CEI. If y'all approve that, we'll get those out, get those bids back in.
All right.
Okay, good.
Three eighty-seven?
Yes, sir.
All right, any questions, concerns? So you need, you need two things, you want.
The construction and for an RFQ for the CEI, to hire an inspector.
A three eighty-seven, that's the Doc Whitfield Road, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
All right, so we'll go with three eighty, so we'll do the first part first, three eighty-seven.
So moved for the three eighty-seven.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails? Any opposition? All right, motion passes five and oh, all right, now I need a motion to RFQ.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? All right, any emails, Miss Care?
Yes, sir.
All right, any opposition? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Second thing, yesterday, Mr. Hammond, Mr. Butler, myself, had a positive conversation with Water Management District, phone call with them, discussing the potential to install some wells, some potable drinking wells in the White City area, they need to do some investigation on that, to see if that's a reliable source of water out of the aquifer around White City. And so, they're looking at some county-owned property, so there's a lot of detail still to work out, but what we're asking for you now is just the permission for the chairman and/or the administrator to sign paperwork to allow them access onto those sites in the next few weeks. They had, like, they're gonna start in the next few weeks, it'd be a project that would take them probably to next summer to complete, but it'd give them some valuable information, which would potentially benefit the county in the long run, all the aquifer and the ability to have wells in White City.
Okay, all right, thank you, sir. All right, any questions, concerns? For being anonymous, I entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel, any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Miss Care? Any opposition? All right, motion passes five and oh, thank you, Mr. Smallwood. All right, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Gob, you don't have anything? Jody, you don't have any mistakes, okay? All right, who won, Missa?
If we could announce the bids, and then, the gentleman that signed up for nine forty-five is here, if we just announce them and let them open them, and then he can speak.
Okay, we'll go to the bids, all right, so we're gonna go right on down to the bids.
Announce them, announce them, then open them, and then we'll come back to read them.
We're gonna get you right after these bids.
Hi, Chairman, today we're opening bid nineteen twenty dash thirty-five, this is for ADA Ramp and Dune Walkover for the Veterans Memorial Beacon Hill Park, we have three bidders. First bidder is L A G Construction Company.
And while she's opening those, if we could, just, we'll go on to the gentleman that signed up. He just read them when he gets through, that's fine.
What's the name of the gentleman that signed up, Mr. O'Neil? All right, Mr. O'Neil, come on up. State your name and address for the record, please, sir.
Yes, sir, Mr. Quinn, my name is Terry O'Neil, and I live at forty forty-five Lake Mary Road in Flagstaff, Arizona. And this is the second time I've come and seen you folks. Yes, sir. And I wanted to talk about freedom and leadership, and as Mr. Hammond talked about, putting things in perspective. I came, good morning, Commissioners, Mr. Hammond. I came before the board some time ago, about fifteen months, thanking you and the county administrator for your leadership with respect to property rights, and I'm here again to say thank you. Like I said before, I was raised in a loving family, free from pressure due to politics, race, religion, I was taught to tell the truth, and accept the consequences of my actions. I was taught to treat others with respect. I'm a free man, just like you, and I feel like folks either don't understand or do not care about the importance of and what freedom represents. I'm not here to tell you to leave me alone, heck, I don't even live here. I'm here in hopes to help the citizens of this fine county, that they have a county board of supervisors who are truly looking out for them. How can anyone not embrace liberty and freedom? The United States is not a social experiment. People have lived under oppression, slavery, serfdom, tyranny for hundreds of years, and then along came some men who wanted to live free, not just under the auspices of some government and its dictates. The United States was born out of blood, sweat, and I'm sure a lot of tears. Hence, I get to leadership, managers do things right. Leaders do the right thing. The good people in this room are, in fact, leaders of the citizenry of Gulf County, and you are under assault, as are many other leaders. The forces of which I've seen at work firsthand. They will try to tear us apart, divide us by race, gender, economic status, and now along a medical divide with this Chinese coronavirus. I understand some people are truly afraid, but I also understand our freedom is truly at risk. If people want to continue to live in fear, I can't stop them, but Lord knows, I don't want that to happen to me. I want to be able to live my life like I have been, free to choose the path for myself and my family. That's why I'm here today. There's a lot of darkness that's going on all around us, and I see you folks as the light in the room. You bring common sense and reason to the table, and I want to commend you for it. I plan on moving here, as I told you before.
Let me get you some more time, Mr. McDaniel.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich, any opposition? Motion passes five and oh, go ahead.
And that's still my plan, and I cannot overemphasize how hard you're gonna have to keep working, and how diligent you're gonna have to be to protect the citizens of this county. True leaders make tough decisions, I've seen you do it, I saw you do it with Highland View, you just did it with the city on another piece of property. And, and I've seen Mr. Hammond do it this morning. So I just wanted to say thanks.
Yes, thanks, sir, appreciate it, Mr. McDaniel. O'Neil, thanks, sir.
I just say real quick, I appreciate you waiting, we just went a little longer than we thought this morning, and we tried to the social distance, but we appreciate you, and we look forward to you to being a citizen of Gulf County.
Mr. Chairman, I just need two minutes, but if that long, it's in reference to number eight on the agenda. Went over, or I'll sit there and miss it?
Oh, we haven't got to it yet, we haven't got to it.
Okay.
Yeah, we're gonna get to it right after these, after these bids.
Mr. Chairman, the first big bid from L A G Construction was one hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one dollars.
Say it again, Lynn.
One hundred sixty-three thousand, one hundred and fifty-one. Next bid is Michael Anderson Incorporated. Chairman, he only provided an original note copies. His bid is one hundred eighteen thousand and three dollars. And the last bid is R J Gorman Marine. His bid is two hundred and seventy thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and sixty-seven cents. And that concludes the bids, Chairman.
Quite a spread, if we could give these to Clay and to Kelly, and let them review these, and come back later in the meeting with a recommendation, we do have, at least the low bid is within range of the money we have for this project, this is the handicap access ramp and the Dune Walkover Veterans Park.
Okay, all right. I missed a couple. Ms. Rhonda, y'all got anything? All right, Ms. Roberts, anything? Okay.
One question, Mr. Chairman, please.
Yes, sir.
This Michael L. Anderson is a low bidder, do we have any history, any background? Is he local, or you have anything on him, or on this, I shouldn't say him, this corporation?
That company just completed Odina Boat Ramp, that was the first project I was aware of, and it turned out pretty well.
Good deal, all right, that's all, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Your what?
Address.
Land Haven, good, okay, thank you.
Captain, you got anything? No, okay, all right, I think that ends county staff business. I know we need to get to board business, go to board business. Mr. Rogers on the phone, you got anything?
No, Mr. Chairman, I'm good.
All right, Mr. Rich?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll be very brief, two items, please, number one, Mr. Jaeger, have you had any feedback with Bay County concerning our EMS? Could you give us an update there?
Yes, sir, I had contacted and left a message for Commissioner Griff, Griffiths, who we had worked with before, he had asked, he understood, he had certainly asked for us to send him a letter, and actually, if we could, if we could give them, him a number, and with that, they will proceed with deciding what they needed to do, but I think their interest is to continue that relationship, so I told them some of the issues that we were having, and some of the budget things that we were trying to work through, being a paramedic is one of them, so I think they're expecting our letter with a specific number, we'll provide that to them.
All right, just for clarification to the board and to the staff, the present thirty-six thousand dollars that we received from Bay County, also in addition to that, when we drew this contract with them, Gulf County retains any Medicare, correct me, we have our, we retain Medicare, Medicaid, any insurance, so we're getting more than just thirty-six, we are collecting off of, am I correct, Mr. Daniel? I was saying, so, I just want that understood, and we will retain that, is that correct? All right, thank you.
Okay.
And, Mr. Chairman.
This board won't give us a number to send in the letter.
I don't want to spook them off, we need a little help, I know we, with the Sacred Heart, as I mentioned in our special meeting last week, we keep one vehicle on the road with Sacred Heart here in transports, and they supplement us, I think I'm correct, we negotiated that at seventy thousand dollars. Is that pretty much it, somewhere around the seventy thousand?
It's original, I think it might be a little bit more than that now.
Maybe a little, is it?
How much?
Oh, I'm way off then, a hundred and fifty thousand with Sacred Heart, thank you. All right, so, as again I said, we don't want to spook them off, we want something that we can feel comfortable with, and they can too, so.
I'd recommend one fifty, we believe it costs at least five hundred thousand to run that full service. We are getting some benefit, not a lot, but some benefit from the other, I think that's, you know, less than a third of what the service for them would cost to start a service, that seems to be reasonable.
I don't know the numbers, you may, like with the Medicare, how much do they pay, or the Medicaid?
It's low. One fifty-five, one seventy-five, one ninety-five?
Come on up to this, Mr. Daniels.
We're negotiating with our neighboring county, and we need to make, uh-oh, I get the paperwork.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I may have the, just ballparking it right here. Sorry, I'm not better prepared on this one, but I'd say on average, Medicare, we would pick up, depending on number of calls, for the. pick up, depending on number of calls, for the, I'm scared to give you a number just looking at what I've got right here, because it doesn't break it down. Without me being wrong, I mean, you'd get a couple hundred dollars for a Medicare call, and it's cheaper for that for a Medicaid call. It's just depending on what they've got.
So we can't keep, stay afloat on Medicare and Medicaid?
No, sir. You'll starve to death waiting on them, I can tell you that.
For example, our standard call would be like maybe thirteen hundred dollars to pick somebody up in Cabo del Panamou. If it's Medicare, Medicaid, you can get two hundred for one, a hundred and seventy-three or whatever the Medicaid rate is.
That's it.
You can bill them a million dollars, that's all they're gonna pay.
That's all you're gonna get.
And kind of separate with insurance, because contract, Blue Cross Blue Shield's gonna pay a flat amount, seven hundred bucks, whatever the deal is, you can bill them a million, they're still gonna pay seven hundred dollars. So that's the kind of problem we have. Poor people don't pay, the government don't pay very much, and insurance companies don't pay a little bit more than that, so, and very few private pay.
I do have a list, this, I just don't have it with me here, this actually wrote down per call as to what we would make that I can get to y'all.
Okay.
Make a better recommendation.
We can do it.
And the deal with that is just remember, that's only for, the additional would only be for those Mexico Beach patients. I don't know that we have the ability to pull that by the location, but I did want to say that when we added that a couple of years ago, we did not see a substantial increase in revenues. It did not make much of an impact.
I knew Medicare and Medicaid was just about a free ride. We might have paid for the fuel over and back, and that's about it. Yeah, it does. All right, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
All right, so you say you want to recommend one fifty, one hundred and fifty thousand?
I think that's an extremely fair compromise. It helps us get another paramedic, and it stems some of our loss. We're still good neighbors, and knowing that it'll cost them half a million to get into business or more to run it, that's, that's less than a third. I think that's very fair.
Okay, questions, Commissioners, Sirens?
Is that gonna leave us enough to amortize the ambulance over a five or six-year period? Do the ambulance have the deal?
No, it will, it'll shorten the loss, and that's, you know, and allow us to pick up another paramedic. No, it's not gonna balance our budget. It's just gonna keep us from having to subsidize the Bay County taxpayer with the Gulf County taxpayer, which helps.
EMS is, if it was a high profit, everybody'd be in it. It's just, on an average, you collect, say you make a hundred runs, I'm just using this example, and if you collect on sixty or sixty-five percent of that, you're at the top of the range. We're probably at fifty or less. There's no money in it, but it's a service.
Just heads up, but we have had two bad years back to back here with this Hurricane Michael coming in, that kind of knocked us back to where it wouldn't be quite be of the loss, but then we thought we'd recoup it this year, and then COVID hit us, and so that's kind of set us back for the last two years. We're trying to fight our way back out of that.
All right.
Now, Michael, on that, you was talking about from Sacred Heart, that actually comes out of the indigent care. That's not subsidized, that's really from the taxpayers.
That's right, it sells tax.
Yeah, that's not from Sacred Heart, that's like.
But they cooperate, because it's gotta be a joint cooperation to spend that, but yes, that's, but it is a service to them, and it cost us a pile of money to do those transports.
All right, did we make the motion last, last?
No, there was no, I'll make the motion for the one fifty.
All right, but did we, I'm saying, did we?
To make contact, and Mr. Jaeger did, but we didn't send an amount.
And a letter? Did we do a letter last time?
But we didn't send an amount. Since, I talked to him yesterday, so I think we just, I think it'd be good if y'all sent an amount.
Okay.
Did you talk to Grill?
Okay, all right, well, I entertain a motion, I'll be, set the amount.
Motion at one fifty.
One hundred and fifty thousand.
Thousand.
All right. Second. Motion by Commissioner McDane, second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails, Ms. Care?
Yes, sir.
Any opposition? All right, motion passes five and oh. You still got the floor, Mr. McDane?
Mr. Chairman, thank you again. One other issue, yesterday I had the opportunity, Mr. Horton and I spent quite a bit of time together in the north end of the county looking over the ditches. We have a situation up there, we need to address it today or tomorrow, a serious situation. The people that live over in the T L James Park area, there's a ditch that runs from the backside of T L James all the way to the Chipola River, and there's two beaver dams in there. We looked at a resident yesterday tore into one, but there's probably twenty-five acres or more of land that is underwater. There's millions of gallons of water that's backed up in there. We've got to get this off. A lot of it is stagnant water. We've got to get the water out of there before we can actually clean the ditches. And there's two, there's one on down behind the elementary school, but we need to take some action on that now. They can't get in there with it. It's lakes backed up in there, stagnant water. One home we looked at yesterday, the water is all the way up to the back steps of the home, and normally he mows as far as here, probably over to the courthouse in his backyard. It's flooded. We've got to get this torn out, and we can get to the one, we can get to both of them, but they've, we've got to get these two problems addressed as soon, Mark, as soon as you can, because the people there, it is, and it's backed up, but we've got to get this addressed. That's on Hall's bottom ditch there in the city of Weewaw, and that is a mosquito control ditch. Am I correct there now? I want to make sure, and we do maintain that ditch, okay? And we do have all these ones where we can take off. All right, Mr. Chairman, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
All right, Mr. McCrone?
A couple of things, Mr. Chairman, thank you. I've got some lots on the end of twentieth street that are joined, they're in the county, but they're joined the city lots there in that neighborhood, and just want to, lack of better word, put some restrictions where those lots have to meet the city zoning that the city requires to keep, you know, to keep everything zoned in that neighborhood, and I just want to make a motion to that we do that this morning.
So if somebody's gonna build, they gotta follow the?
The city's zoning for that, you know, you can't, you know, bring in something that's not, you know, normal, you know, whatever's required in that neighborhood, you know, far zoning or restrictions on lots. We want to keep it the same.
All right, so I got a motion by Commissioner McCrone.
I'll second his motion.
All right, second by Commissioner McDane. Any further board discussion on this?
If I could suggest, and I'd like Jeremy to chime in, I think a one-page interlocal with the city, we're talking about two lots, the line runs at an angle, I think just a screw-up when they did the line, but there are, I don't know, fourteen lots that face each other at the very dead end of this ditch that's right here, at the dead end of twentieth, that we could do just a, just a one-page interlocal with the city to accept their zoning in that community, because it's just, it's a line screw-up.
All right, you?
I'm right.
What'd he say?
Go ahead, Mr. Novak.
Mr. Chairman, Michael, I said I was fine with that.
Okay. Yeah, I'm good, yeah.
Okay, all right, one-page. All right, so I got a motion by Commissioner McCrone, second by Commissioner McDane. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Emails? Any opposition? All right, motion passes five and oh.
A couple more things, I just want to check on that no-wake ordinance we were working on. Have we made any progress on that?
Michael, can I?
Please.
Commissioner McCrone, have we reviewed that? What we're gonna do is propose a resolution next meeting. It's not our jurisdictions, we just, we don't have the ability to enforce on Fish and Wildlife state jurisdiction similar to when we did, I don't, Michael, is there an echo when I speak?
There's an echo.
I apologize. Real simply, we do not have the jurisdiction to enforce it. What we can do is a commission is have a vote of this board to support the state authorities to enforce the no-wake zones around the fisheries and areas that you've identified throughout the county.
Okay. Do we still have to have an ordinance in place according to them, for them to enforce?
Okay, again, we don't have, they can go out there and they can take our ordinance, but similar to, I'll give you all nint, and I'll give you all, we wrote a leave no trace, and when we had no leave trace, we said you can't shark fish bloodbaiting on the shores of Gulf County. Fish Wildlife General Counsel came back and said you don't have jurisdiction over ordinance on our waters. So if you put it out there, it's language, but it's not enforceable. Okay, so if that's a conversation I can have with them, and they'd like to do it, we can do an ordinance, but as I understand it and as I researched it, it's a resolution that you're supporting the Fish and Wildlife Service to maintain no-wake zones next to the fisheries and areas of concern.
Okay, that's fine, whatever we need to do.
So I will, I will offer the resolution, and then if the ordinance will support that under their general counsel, then I will offer that up on the advertising for next month's meeting.
Okay. Okay. Last thing I have, Mr. Chairman, I just want to, we had a young man drown at the State Park, very sad, and I just want to thank Gulf County EMS, heard nothing but good things, the South Gulf County Fire Department and the Sheriff's Department. That was a tough day that day, I know, and I just want to mention those. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, and the chair doesn't have anything? You got something?
You want to get this, you know?
He's going with the quasi.
Oh, he's with the quasi?
All right, let's knock out this quasi, then we'll take a quick five-minute break. All right, all right, quasi judicial hearing review, consideration of P D R B application, final plat approval, Indian Pass shores. You have the floor, Mr. Collinsworth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, we have final plat approval for Indian Pass shores. Applicant is Peach Concepts nineteen LLC. Horse was located at zero three one eight seven dash zero zero nine R, section twenty-one, township nine south rings ten west. This is the final plat approval, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right, is anyone here that wants to speak on this issue or this item, please step forward? All right, Mr. Jack, make sure you state your name and for the record, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jack husband, Southeast Consulting Engineers, one twenty highway seventy-one, we hit Florida three two four six five.
All right, hold on one second, Mr. Husband. All right, does the board have any opposition with waiving the quasi judicial hearing? Or anyone in the audience has any opposition with waiving the quasi judicial hearing? Objections? That being that I entertain a motion to waive the quasi judicial hearing?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDane.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Anyone in the audience? Any opposition to the motion to waive? Motion waive, motion passes five and oh. All right, you have the floor, Mr. Husband.
Thanks, sir. This is the, on behalf of Peach Concepts nineteen, we're proposing a nineteen unit subdivision along Indian Pass Road on the Gulf side. Since you've seen the preliminary plat, we've made all the updates to the plans per Mr. Butler's, the chairman of the planning board's recommendations. We've also got a stormwater permit and a water permit from the state back as well.
Okay, all right.
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Collinsworth?
Mr. Chairman, P D R B recommends to the board on a three oh vote to approve the subdivision final plat.
All right. All right, Mr. Novak?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, I can read it, I don't know if Mr. Novak has the paper.
Okay, I'm sorry, yes, sir, go ahead.
I called it, and I don't have the question.
I'll take care of it. In your packet, Mr. Chairman, you have the provisions. One, the Gulf County Commission sets the planning department statement for completments for the subdivision. Gulf County Commission deemed record submitted as competent and substantial evidence to support the decision of the commission. Gulf County Commission sets planning department statement and representation of proper notice of public hearing was provided. The commission makes findings that requirements for subdivision final plat approval have been met by the applicant for the subdivision, and the commission further makes the finding issues for development order shall be based upon full and adequate hearing consideration of all evident testimony provided you today, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you, sir. All right.
P D R B voted three oh to approve.
P D R B voted three oh. Any questions, concerns, Commissioners?
I've got copies of the plat, I'm sorry, I forgot to give them.
They should all have them.
Okay.
We got it. All right, questions, concerns? All right, what's the wishes of the, of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to motion that we approve this final plat.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDane to approve.
Second, Mr. Chairman.
All right, second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience? All right, any opposition to that motion? Any emails? Any opposition? All right, motion passes five and oh. Thanks, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all we have on that one.
All right, Mr. Novak?
Mr. Chairman, would you like me to move on to the?
Public hearing, abandonment of the county right-of-way?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I'll read the summary, follow the notice of adoption resolution, and the approval of Gulf County right-of-way abandonment, termister starfish adjacent in Beacon Hill subdivision district. The notice has been prepared for today, Tuesday, July twenty-eighth, two thousand, for the boardroom for a public hearing to consider the abandonment of this county right-of-way. The resolution's been prepared in part on the basis and authority for Gulf County pursuant to Florida statute one twenty-five, section three thirty-six, section one seventy-seven, and Gulf County policy, which was on May thirty-first, two thousand and forty. Mr. Davis, who's applied for the abandonment, has met all the requirements of the planning and your policy. He's been properly advertised and noted, he's been advertised on the property, and has been preliminarily approved by this commission in a previous meeting in, we've moved forward on your recommendation and your unanimous vote to advertise, and it's up for a public hearing today for any comment before you take it under consideration. If, Mr. Chairman, and Commissioners, if you approve this today, the final steps will be that we will advertise the notice of adoption, and then we will go ahead and provide it to the clerk for recording, and they'll provide the county attorney's office a final package for review. That's it, Mr. Chairman, I'll be happy answering.
All right, thanks, sir. All right, this time, any questions, Commissioner from Mr. Novak? If there being that this time we're gonna open up the public hearing, it's now open to the public. If anyone's with thoughts, concerns, you come on up. Come on up and state your name and your address for the record, please, sir.
I can forgive me a few moments to speak on this. My name is John Arnold. My address is two twenty Buccaneer Drive, Port St. Joe, Florida. My concerns on closing this right-of-way is a number of things. One is, you know, the things it provides, it's actually a fire break that's protecting these people, you know, if it's cleared, it creates a fire break. I've been discussing fire breaks in that area. First off, I'm here representing the Arnold Family Trust and also one of the neighbors there in the neighborhood, but this fire break is a necessity with all the woods, the downed trees backing right up to these people's house. I assume the people that own property there, there's three owners there, they're probably interested in getting this done, but I don't think they realize the dangers that their houses are up against in the back of their houses with all the trees there are. Matter of fact, one of the owners has just pushed all their trees cleaning up their property right in the right-of-way back there, and just got trees pushed up. I've been talking with the four- I've been talking with the forestry division and working with them, and they're in the process of trying to get some grant to clean up some of that back there just for, because of the dangers of the fire break. And right now, if there was a fire there, we need some kind of emergency response area to get into, to fight the fires behind these houses before they get to these houses. You know, that's some of the concerns now, are the reasons to leave that alley there. Now, on our behalf, that's on their behalf, that they don't, may not realize. On our behalf, as owning a hundred acres right there where that road goes into, excuse me, is having a development needs. We don't, we don't know what we're going to put there, or when we're going to put something there, or are we going to sell it and have something done, but that right-of-way will serve some access to that property. And when you got a hundred acres in the back of Beacon Hill, you're going to need some access, every access you can get, to do any kind of development, whether it's, you know, a construction, you know, for vehicles to go in and out. And there again, is protecting the people that live, the three houses that are there that are in favor of this, I'm assuming that's who it is, that are in favor of this, is, you know, there's an access behind their house where they don't have these construction vehicles going in and out, or, you know, during the development of this property. And what is going to be needed, I don't know, on the property, but I know that access provides some benefits on the development, and that's quite a tract of property, and it would be nice to be able to use that as an access. Those are some of the benefits, you know. Now, I don't know of keeping it. I don't know what the benefits of closing it is, but I know the benefits of keeping it there. Also, I want to let y'all know that at the beginning right there where it comes off of starfish, I, the neighbor, this, on the north side of that alley, hired me to go in there and take his trees down because they were endangering the houses there. Well, not only did we take the trees down on his property, we took them out of this alley and got rid of those trees because they were leaning over toward these people's property, their house, their boat and stuff. So the neighbor and I took the initiative to get these trees down while we were there. I did them personally, took the trees down because of the danger of them. And that was on the right-of-way, because we were right there next door working. Only made sense for us to go over and take down five or six trees as we were doing it. Actually, the trees are still there, and the neighbor's trees are still there, and Mr., the house on the end, they just took their trees and pushed back there on the trust property, which has created more of a fire hazard. And that's why I've been talking to the fire, forestry department. And if the forestry department, they're trying to get funds to clear a hundred foot through there. But there's a fire break back there. Actually, I'm giving up the property to let them do it, giving them the easement. I done signed the easement for them to clear a hundred foot to protect the back of Beacon Hill. I wish y'all'd give us some consideration that we could use that alley to be able to get in there and provide some of this work that the forestry division's trying to get done, that I'm trying to get done. It's an improvement to the neighborhood. It's got a lot of benefits of leaving it open, and I just wish y'all would take all those benefits in consideration and compare them to the benefits of closing it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arnold. Yes, sir. All right. All right, anyone else here want to speak on this issue? All right, Mr. McDaniel, you want to add something?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I have to, in some ways, disagree with not all of what Mr. Arnold said, but some of them. This is nothing but a pond. It's absolutely, serves no purpose, no purpose whatsoever. To his property, you'd have to come in the other way, it's a little bit higher. This is nothing but a pond out there. I don't know what, I don't know what the loads of dirt it'd take to fill it in, but in no way is it going to restrict people. If you can get a fire truck down in there, we go put fire trucks on people's private property all the time. We have something there, an ambulance to get in there, no way. At the end of the street, you're not going to go anywhere. And I personally am going to support and recommend the that we approve the closing of this. I've been out there numerous times, Mr. Collinsworth, would you like to, you and I've spent quite a bit of time in there. If you'd like to shed in light on this, I'd approve you. I appreciate you doing it.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McDaniel. That only serves that alleyway, or alleyway, this is actually a little roadway that's never been cleaned. There's one property on the west end, there's one property on the east end side of this. One would be Mr. Davis, one would be the Arnold Trust. If this is, when it's abandoned, if it's abandoned, they get half, the Davises would get half, so it doesn't close access off to anything. The Davis is going to clear his part, so if any dead trees, it's actually going to clean it up. So there's no other houses that it's going to serve. It's only about eighty feet long. Wooded, it is wooded, there's no doubt about that, but it's definitely not going to cut access off to anything. So I don't know if somebody's got the parcels mixed up or whatever, but this is a very small section, end of a roadway. Nobody's access is getting cut off, there can be access from somewhere else, so, and it is low. There's swamp land, and the Davis property to the west has already showed intentions on trying to clean the wooded part up, which would help. So it serves no purpose for the county that I'm aware of. I've been out there numerous times, and I would definitely support that the county abandon it. If not, the county's going to end up having to go out there. The next thing everyone knows is when's the county going to go out there and build roads through there? And the county has no intentions on do that, as far as I'm aware, and it would take a lot of field to get that fixed, so that's where the staff stands, Mr. Commissioner.
All right, Mr. Collinsworth, you said that.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Novak.
Can I add something to Mr. Collins?
Yes, sir.
The testimony from Mr. Arnold indicated that he wanted to have
Mr. Novak?
To a hundred and six acres in the Arnold Trust.
Mr. Novak, you, 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 you get a little long winded there, it's kind of telling out, you're going out, so just keep it short, short sentences, and then we can understand you. You're going in and out.
All right, hang on one second. Okay, is this better?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Arnold indicated he has once for the Arnold Trust. There's a hundred and six acres back. The Arnold Trust currently has access from County Road three eighty-six, Helmet, Triton, Nutmeg, Cowries, Bonnet, and Phillips. So the petition would not restrict any of those to the Arnold property. And the consideration for future would be to add along this piece of Nutmeg behind Davis as Mr. Collinsworth indicated, additional fill county in addition to the eight other access I just listed. So I wanted to put that on record to add to Mr. Collinsworth's support. That's all, sir.
Thanks, sir. All right, Mr. Collinsworth, you did say that if we do abandon it, you said somebody'd get half and somebody else'd get the other half. Yeah.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. Normally, when the abandonment goes through, centers only two property owners. One would get the half, which would be the Arnold Trust would have the east side. The west side would be Mr. Davis, and while Mr. Novak was speaking, the east side, which abuts the Arnold Family Trust, that section of road is fifty feet long, and the section on the Davis side is eighty feet long. It's like a little triangle piece there, so we're not talking a very, that piece goes nowhere. The Arnold Trust would get the east half, and the Davis property would get the west half.
Okay, all right. Any more questions, commissioners? All right, anyone else in the public? All right, is now closed to the public? Now closed to the public. All right, Mr. Novak, we're not making the decision today, are we?
Yes, sir.
We are, okay. Okay. All right, what's the wishes of the board?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make the motion, we approve the abandonment of this right-of-way.
All right, got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by, Commissioner Rich, that was you? Second by Commissioner Rich. All right, any further board discussion? All right. All right, anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? Any emails, Ms. Care? All right, any opposition to the motion? All right, motion to abandon passes five and oh. All right, let's take a...
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'll prepare the notice of adoption and add it into the paper.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks, sir. We're going to take a five-minute recess, please, five-minute recess.